Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November the 6th Committee of the Whole. Sorry for the cool temperatures in here. I guess that'll just keep us all awake and alert and ready to get through things promptly.
Okay.
Or something like that. So just turn to council, please, if I could get approval of the agenda as it is presented.
Move.
Yep, it's Committee of the Whole, so we don't require a seconders. So that's moved by councillor Pearson. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, so we do have a delegation this evening from B.C. Sustainable Energy Association and Transition SUC, Marion Pope, Pape, pardon me, and Jeff Bateman. And I understand that you've requested 15 minutes for your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, you'll need to stay within 15 minutes.
Around the clock.
That might have Michael 30.
Yes. Thank you, and welcome.
And we have the pointer here. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor Tate, and councillor Pearson, and Loggins, and Parkinson, and staff, and whoever's behind me here. I'm Jeff Bateman, president of Transition SUC, and with me tonight is Marion Pape, the former president of the B.C. Sustainable Energy Association, and currently a steering committee member with the B.C. SCA's Victoria chapter. I'll speak for six minutes or so, then hand over to Marion. My goals tonight are, one, to quickly review the district's commitments to climate change mitigation; secondly, to highlight some good news stories locally; third, to revisit discussions undertaken by the Climate Change Action Committee, which I chaired during 2015-16. Then Marion will introduce the B.C. SCA's bold and visionary 100% renewable energy by 2050 program, which is designed for municipalities in the greater Victoria region. So, where do I point?
Towards us.
Towards her.
I needed a lesson on this beforehand.
Point towards us.
Two or three.
You may have to turn it off at this time.
Lee, you've done this before.
Not that one.
Not this one.
There we go.
Okay.
There. Got to turn it on.
No, I point over here.
Okay.
Okay. So legislative context. As you can see, the district is already committed to adapting to climate change, including getting heaters in this room. So we have, SUC is one of 182 local governments in B.C. to have signed the Climate Change Action Charter back in 2008. Our 2010 OCP addresses energy and climate change extensively, and SUC's Community Energy and Emissions Plan outlines steps that the district will take and is taking in reducing greenhouse gas emissions at both the corporate and community levels. So there's bylaw 400, OCP 2010. I just want to highlight a couple of phrases there. The D.O.S. is to implement innovative infrastructure technologies. We're to be a carbon-neutral municipal operations, which is now the case, and we're going to partner with the SUC Nation to implement a clean renewable energy economy. And in the OCP refresh, it's very refreshing and wonderful to see that protect the environment is the first of three big goals in this process which is being handled so capably by Danica Rice. This is the will of the people speaking as per the feedback she's been receiving to date. And among the 12 key directions are these priorities, all of which are very much in keeping with our commitments under the Climate Change Accord. Now, we've entered this new era where funding opportunities are available at from various levels. The Pan-Canadian Framework on Clean Growth and Climate Change, signed by Ottawa and all of the provinces except Saskatchewan and Manitoba last December. A rising out of it is the $2 billion Low Carbon Economy Fund, which is available to all levels of government through 2022. There's also the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Municipal Fund, which is a $675 million program which finances innovative municipal sustainability needs and priorities. Now, these potential funds are not to be confused with the gas tax monies that the district receives from the province for road infrastructure improvements and community projects, such as this year, a nice chunk of it is going to the SUC turf field project, which is a different kind of greening in SUC than we're talking about tonight, but a no less essential one. Now, these gas tax monies flow to us automatically, whereas it will take initiative on the district's part to secure our small but significant share of these new green infrastructure funding programs. We'll need to develop shovel-ready plans for projects that lower GHG emissions in SUC. Now, there's plenty of evidence that the community is already moving in the right direction. We have the SUC First Nations, solar, aquaculture, wasabi, cash crops, and now the SUC Centre for Sustainability, which is developing net-zero housing for First Nations communities. The district of SUC itself is carbon-neutral, as I said earlier, initiatives like LED street lamps, a corporate waste reduction strategy, new trail linkages, riparian area protection. We also have a growing number of savvy, energy-smart builders and architects in town listed there. We also have some, among others, listed, we also have geothermal homes at Woodland Creek, and a Built Green Canada Gold Standard for harborside cohousing. Now, I don't see the clock, so I don't know how long I've been going on here, but bear with me.
One more minute.
One more minute? Oh, dear. Okay. So hugely encouraging to see that Youth for Change students at EMCS raised funds for an EV charger at the school, where, incidentally, the water bottle fill station outside its library has served up and saved the equivalent of nearly 60,000 plastic water bottles. There are title energy startup companies in town, solar panel installation firms, we have roadside cleanup, thanks to the iconic Sifu Moonfist, as well as the EMCS Youth Engagement Team, Rotary Club of SUC, and Zero Waste SUC. And last but not least, we have Transition SUC. So, slide nine, very quickly moving through here. So during 2015 and 16, I was honored to be the chairperson of the Climate Change Action Committee. I was very much the lightweight among a pretty remarkable gang that included Andrew Moore from the SUC Solar Project, Transition SUC's founding president, Michael Tacon, Solar Callwoods, Nisha Harris, Mark Ziegler, formerly with the Climate Change Secretariat in Ottawa, and a Scoukham crew of district staff, Laura Hooper, Brent Blackhall, who was formerly with the Pacific Carbon Trust, former fire chief Steve Sorenson, and our last meeting Patty Reer, who was co-chair of the Pitt Meadows Green Leadership Team from 2007 to 2012. So, if the committee was still going strong, it would have been good to hear from some other truly knowledgeable D.O.S. staff members, who I met at October the other week, namely Tony Baston and Paul Butterfield. So I'm totally confident that SUC has the right staff members to do great things and give them the green light by council. Anyway, we had some lively discussions, which I hope won't be lost now that the committee has run its course. As you can see in the slide, we noted that it's prime time for the D.O.S. to pursue grant monies. We discussed a municipal compost facility and yard waste depot, and we had an overall ambition of expanding the boundaries of Solar City from the SUC Nation to the district. Finally, we recommended that the B.C. SCA present its 100% renewable campaign to the Committee of the Whole. So I'm very glad to hand things over now to Marion Pape to do exactly that.
Thank you. I'm going to just proceed directly into this presentation. This slide represents B.C. SCA. This is the COOLIT program that is leadership training for children in grades four through seven. B.C. SCA brings issues forward to government, business, and communities. We intervene in Utilities Commission reviews of the energy plans of B.C. Hydro and other utilities. This presentation tonight is a part of our work in helping communities move forward. You start with the data on energy use and emissions, but I'm not going to go into a lot of the specific data because this goes, takes us back to, you know, way long ago in 2010. We understand data collection, however, is incredibly important. But you can see through the pie charts that buildings and transportation are the big issues for this municipality. Buildings, you know, there's already big steps forward in implementing heat pumps to replace fossil fuel heating, building efficiency upgrades. The provincial government is working really hard in that area. Council can do changes in densification and zoning from multi-use residential buildings and creating walkable communities. But the transportation, I mean, that's going to be your biggest challenge, and it's going to be incremental, and, you know, the technology is developing as we go along. The vision for 2050 renewable energy, 100% renewable energy, goes further with mode shifting, getting people out of cars. It's pretty hard here to do that, but there's a number of things that are already starting to happen. Electrifying transit, the cycling and the walking in short-range issues. Freight transportation is on its way to being electrified, and just reducing the number of trips. Sorry about that. So this is, is the federal minister. We have, we're at a crossroads between reliance on fossil fuels of the past and the renewable energy future ahead. We have a friendly group of legislators now, as was mentioned, and the opportunities prevail. It's not lost on me that tonight, today, COP23 opened in Bonn, Germany. And you can see the quote from David Rieh, University of Edinburgh, that was in the Guardian this week. "We know that as climate change intensifies, the ability of the land and the oceans to mop up our carbon emissions will weaken. There's still time to steer these emissions down, and so keep control, some control. But if we wait too long, humankind will become a passenger on a one-way street to dangerous climate change." So the urgency is potent, but there's lots of things that are happening. And this started in Paris two years ago, the 100% renewable energy by 2050. A thousand mayors announced major commitments at that time. And that's the movement that B.C. SCA is now working on with municipalities in this region. Now, what is 100% renewable energy? There's a department called Renewable Cities at Simon Fraser University, and we've been using them to help us with definitions. And it basically means a transition to 100% renewable energy sources in all three energy sectors, electricity, heating, cooling, and transportation, community-wide, towards an equitable, sustainable future. And there's lots of processes for doing that. Democratic engagement, collaboration, energy democracy, and social justice are all a part of what we are doing. This is where we are now in Victoria. In August 2016, Victoria, at a meeting similar to this, proclaimed themselves 100%, that they were going to work towards 100% renewable energy. Then we started working also with Sanich. We did a pathway report, which I think is in your packages. We gave you a link. And in October of 2017, just last month, Sanich proclaimed themselves 100% renewable community. We are now working with Esquimal, tonight's presentation to you, Michosen, Central Sanich, Oak Bay, and others. So we're working on getting this to go forward as a region-wide project. Now, sustainable Malmo is in Sweden, and is the top 10 things that Malmo, they started with public transport driven by food waste, housing, areas with renewable energy, organic food, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm suggesting a sustainable SUC. Here we go. Number one, buildings. Every new building that we build will last for 50 years, and so it behooves us to build properly now, all of our buildings. And we have the incredible advantage now with the program, the step program and leadership at the provincial level, SUC has the opportunity to proclaim what level, what step level you're going to go to. So the recommendation from B.C. SCA and others is step three, and frankly, it doesn't cost any more than step two. So step three is really quite a high ambitious level. Another thing that is easy target is that every public, every public building have solar, PV. Third, some kind of a plan that every fourth trip, every fourth journey you make be alternative transportation, some way of doing it differently. Your organics to the Heartland landfill, we can stop sending them and capturing the methane. Another idea, promote free organic and climate-smart school dinners for all children. Start with the children and our grandchildren. Number six, provide, not consume, energy at SUC events. For example, at festivals, make all the food organic, recycle every bit of waste. You know, you might be doing this already in all of your events. Make public transportation available to the event. Number seven, promote a buy SUC policy. I think you've done this before. And just actively support the many, many shops, because then the stuff doesn't have to come from far away, and you don't have to drive to get it. Support wind power and a solar farm. We're looking for a spot for a solar farm in this region. Don't you think this would be a good spot for that? You've already started it. Number nine, encourage SUC families to car and ride share. And then green roofs. Green roofs really have a lot of advantages to do many. For example, flooding issues can be alleviated. Now, I've got three steps to suggest. Step 101 level are the low-hanging fruit. So we're going to go easy, medium, and then long range. But these aren't predictive. These are just some ideas. And so the first one is that you pass a resolution that you're going to work towards this, this method. The big decision is deciding to do it and establishing a plan. And that's what Sanich and Victoria are starting to do. The next one, engage the citizens. It's the citizens that are going to make this all happen. It doesn't always happen to come from the leaders in the community. So we sponsored a big town hall event in Sanich, and it was an amazing opportunity for citizens to come and say, yeah, this is some ideas. Get them energized, get them excited about what they can and can't do. And this is something B.C. SCA would be prepared to help you with. Undertake the first steps in the step code is an obvious one for you. The zoning and the permitting costs for renewable energy systems, because this might be the place for you to do that. And then, okay, come on, number two. There we are. Sorry, what have I done?
Can I give it to you?
I think I'm going backwards.
Please, someone else.
Oh, I have to go back. Sorry, sorry.
I think the screen froze like the rest of us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here it is. And then, okay. Thanks. I just have two more slides left.
Could you come save us, Carolyn?
Are you doing it, or shall I?
Ah, there you got it. The one, just two, three from the bottom.
One more back?
One before that. So the 201 level is identify a major infrastructure project, create something that's shovel-ready. And sometimes these big projects can, can really do an amazing job to get the community energized. Put solar on every public building, continue to maximize energy efficiency in existing and future public buildings. Salisbury Island put solar and geothermal on their new library building. And, you know, that's a really interesting model, because I understand you're building a new library. Libraries are a great place to do that kind of thing. And then require minimum energy efficiency investment as a part of all of the affordable housing and rental licensing. Those are, the people that live in those, in that housing, are the ones that need to have their costs reduced. And the 301 level, study the cost-effectiveness of inclusive financing for onsite energy financing and renewable energy. There's going to be innovative, new ways of paying for what we need to have happen, and these need to be investigated. Find a way in community policy that allows electric customers to collectively own and share energy from one of these new renewable energy projects that you're going to sponsor, and then commit to developing energy production to serve local needs, such as a solar farm in SUC. And, there. That's my presentation. Do, is there any time for questions?
Yeah, we do, a few minutes. Thank you very much for, for coming and for presenting. I particularly like the sort of recap on where we've, the road that we've been on so far. So thank you for doing that, as well as some suggestions to think of going forward. I think everyone here has some ideas in mind with different pieces, whether it was the new building, the library, or ways to look into affordable housing. We do have a few notice of motions made by councillors that are working their way through the, sort of, the processes on the agenda. One of them is an affordable housing committee. We have a land use committee, potential for a trails task force, even public artwork, and even finance and admin. So there's a number of different ways that some of these can be potentially picked up by those committees. Youth engagement as well being another one. So I think there's six. And we'll see where we land with those. A big challenge with committees is where do we schedule them all, and who's going to sit on them, and who's going to provide support and the like. So it's timely, because it's leading us right into budget deliberations, and then sort of the last year within our mandate to do some work on our strategic plan. So it's very, the timing is really good. Just a couple of things to think of for yourselves to sort of take away. Transit is coming out to SUC next year to look at their future plan for this community. It's something they do, I think, every five years or so, so they can assess what the ridership is like, what, you know, we have Waddam's Way in right now that is not serviced by transit, and a need to expand on the community buses. So that might be something that will weigh in at that time, as well as a number of different developments have occurred and are being developed as we speak from when the last time they were out. So that may be a way to involve transit in terms of making public transit more usable. We do have staff working on an e-charging station in town, so I think that has gone out to RFQ or RFP, and so we're finalizing that. I know that Sea Park has already put their stall in already, so that's great to have one at the rec center, another within town. Our OCP, of course, continues to move along. There's the committees, and then also, we spoke, I think, when you were here the last time, about a bylaw that would ban plastic bags. And then that sort of got put out to the CRD. And I'm still kind of tracking what happened to it, but I did, right before I came upstairs, opened up a letter from the City of Victoria, where they've drafted a bylaw and sent us a copy. So I don't know if they just progressed with that on their own, but it's something that, at an upcoming meeting, that we can look at as well. So there's just a couple of things that I thought you might want to consider, give some feedback on later, in addition to the committees, once they actually establish themselves. But this is certainly very topical, and thank you very much for your time. Comments, councillor Pearson? Go ahead, please.
Good. Thank you for, both for your presentation tonight. And as always, I always have a few little comments along the way. I won't go on like the seven minutes I did last time, or whatever that was. The, because, just so everybody can get warmed up sooner or later. The, there's a couple of key points in there, and at, at the end of it, I think that we're, if we're going to be successful by a totally, you know, renewable resources by 2050, then we need to start putting it into our strategic plan, that we're considering that as a piece of our good governance. So that sustainability piece, again, that strategic plan has to encompass that, so that we're asking the question as part of our decision-making process. You know, that should be our guiding template high up. So then, that's something that I think that we need to consider again, and I talked about that last time in our next strategic review. Little things, I think, make a difference when we're, we're moving forward. And I see in your suggestions there that every fourth trip be an alternative method of, of transportation. I would like, and just, you guys can keep, write down whatever you want in there, I'd like to say, even if it was carpooling, but, you know, like,
That's right.
It might not be practical for all of us to ride a bike or walk somewhere or something like that, but if, you know what, to put two people in a car is, is an effective way of alternating, alternating that. So it's just a little ways of thinking. So you got me thinking about things as well. So buy SUC, which I 100% support, and I think we've put that into our strategic planning and talking about sourcing local. There's a couple of things like civic bid, info bid, so you need to be very proactive in that process with UBCM, and, and that, the green element and the carbon footprint of contractors. Because I really believe that we demonstrate that if we, if we shop locally, as opposed to that civic bid. And I know that's a bigger challenge, but I think it's something that our voice needs to be heard at. The other part that I always, that I always talk about is, is for, and I know Mr. Bateman is aware of this, is that be really in tune with applications for rezoning. What do those rezoning applications mean for renewable sources? You know, the smart downtowns, the densification of downtowns, the walkability, the transportation, all of those things. And then on top of that, the economic development. It's, it's critical, if we're going to be sustainable, is getting the number of, as an example, the number of vehicles off the road between here and Victoria. So locating industry or manufacturing or jobs in our own community reduces our carbon footprint in the big, big picture. So, you know, it helps us at council if there's somebody supporting a development of a local industry. And, and it's critical that your voice gets heard there. So I would ask you to, you know, to be aware of zoning applications that are out there in the city. So little things, and I think that you're right, the library's coming up, so, you know, before that goes out to tender for, for their building and things like that, you know, we could put our local requirements on. So good stuff, just a couple of key points from me. But, thank you again, and it's up to us now is to, you know, make it intrinsic to our governance model. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Other comments? Councillor Loggins, please.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming and presenting today. There's a lot of really valuable information and great ideas coming forward. I think it would be really great to have that community talk, as you mentioned, specifically related to climate action, or change action. And I did have a question for you, Mr. Bateman, since you were on the Climate Change Action Committee, and I was with you on that. I thought it was a really rewarding committee and one of the better ones that I was on. It was really nice to be able to work with all of the staff and see how we could make changes directly, and I think that a lot of that was enacted. The challenge we have going forward, the challenge I have, is that I'm trying to start up three committees. The Community Center, Youth Advisory, and Affordable Housing Committee. So I don't think I want to add this to my plate. And the other challenge is staff time, because the committee that we were on did require a lot of staff and a lot of staff time. So my question then to you would be, how would you suggest that we fit these actions into the committees that we're forming now on council? Because I see little bits of them, but, but I'm hoping perhaps you could even come back with more information or provide some insight today.
So we're, we're speaking of the task forces now, right? Are these committees or task forces?
Only one is a task force, and the other are committees.
Okay.
Some have existing terms of references, and others would be new terms of references that would be developed.
Well, I would, I would hope that, that this kind of, this, this overview that we've presented tonight would be, as the mayor said, addressed or as a, as a background to everything that you're, you're thinking and planning. And at the, at the same time, perhaps a small step can be made. And at the, at the same time, perhaps a small step can be made outside of your committee structures, which would be to organize a, a town hall session of some kind. Now, I didn't mention under the, the funding aspects is that the district did create a, where is that? Carbon, the, the District of Suk's Carbon Tax Rebate Reserve Fund, which gets about $1,700 a year from, from the who? Bren?
It's from the climate, well, it's the CARAP program.
CARAP, yes.
Yeah. Climate Action Rebate Incentive Program.
Yeah. So I think there's about $6,000 in that fund at the moment, and that might be tapped to some degree to, to support the BCSA in organizing a local, local event of some kind, local brainstorm, to energize the community. Marion?
Could I add to that? I was thinking, Kevin, your comment about how this needs to be integrated into your strategic plan. And so it could be, it could be put into that category that is already staffed, and, and then bring local people from the community to add some planning expertise, and, you know, maybe you could just put it through. And that's very high level. That would make it very important. And then the big town hall could be the consultation process around that segment of your strategic plan. Yeah. So that way, it's kind of like the most visible thing that you're going to see. Yeah.
So just to follow up on, on my question, I think that helps, helps me think some things through pretty well. What we did with a couple of the committees was we had a position specifically for people from different groups throughout the community, so that we're representing a wide range of, of the population. So perhaps what I could put forward in these committees is a position specifically for someone who has a bit of an expertise on environment, and that way they can ensure, like, it's almost a role, that someone's there to ensure that we think about the environment with every step, and then they can have that expertise at the table. Thank you, that helps a lot.
Perhaps some of the past members of, of your committee?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So moving along in our agenda, we'll move into our reports section, and after each presentation, there is an opportunity for public input. So we have our four different groups here, and I'll just start off in order. Our first one up is the Suk Community Association. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Lenell, forward, please. And if you could please just turn on the microphone, there's just a button on the, the base of the, there it is. Thank you, sir.
I'll just, I send you guys all a report. The Community Association, this is strictly for the community hall, this money. We, I don't know, I'm not a very good speaker, but we, we provide free storage for a lot of organizations that work through the hall. Some of these groups are all year round, like the Meals and Wheels, three times a week, the Suk Food Bank, they're in there just about every day, and they produce their food out of the hall. The Contact Loan Cupboard, which is all mostly hospital or that type of equipment, if you're unable to, you need to rent something, you can come in and get it. We do not charge them for use of it. We run in somewhere around 14 fridges and freezers in the community hall right now to, for the food bank and the loan cupboard and, not the loan cupboard, the food bank and Meals and Wheels. Of course, we provide heat, electricity, hot and cold water, and the gas for all the stoves and furnaces. Other places, or other clubs that use the hall, which pay a small rent, is Alliance Club. They have their phone book room, plus they hold their monthly meetings, or every two weeks there's a meeting, I think, believe. Suk Harbor Sidelines, they have storage in there. Of course, the food bank, they're in and out. And also they supply, like, coming up there in a couple of weeks, they'll have, the food bank will have the hall, basement of the hall, dining room, all, all downstairs, basically, for the Christmas hampers to be produced. The Lions Club, they got a fair space for storage to keep all their events, or all their stuff, so they can put on events throughout the year. And then, on our expenses, we have fire inspections, including the sprinkler system, fire extinguish, smoke alarms annually, steam cleaning of the kitchen, the elevator service, it's done every three months, of course, our insurance costs, and that covers our burglar alarms and fire protection. And then we have a full-time janitor in there all year round. So added all that, our, our expenses for the community hall is approximately $5,000 a month. And of course, by renting it out, we've lost quite a few weddings because of the hotel down there, nicer place, I guess, to go. And then you got your paper goods and all light bulbs and all the cost of replacing cleaning equipment and stuff. So the Community Association would like to thank the city for giving us the money they have given us, and we'd like to have it again, and we were wondering if we could have a little bit of a, maybe 2% cost raise of living to help us out with the raising costs of hydro and water and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Lenell. Yeah, we, we've received all the documents that you provided in advance, so thank you very much for that. So just to be clear then, basically looking for another five-year agreement, $28,000 starting with a 2% increase in 2018 per year?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Pearson?
I'll make a motion that we take this to our budget and planning, and to the regular council meeting. I don't think we need a second.
No? So you wanted to go to both meetings?
Well, it's got to be part of the financial plan, so that at least we discuss it at the financial planning. Is that correct, Mr. Black? I'll through the chair to you, Mr. Black.
So, yeah, usually this would go to, like, committee of the hall refers to council.
Yeah.
And then, where do we insert the budget planning?
Yes, Your Worship. This information is, is what we need to help, you know, put it in the financial plan, and then the discussions can start about where the numbers end up at.
So would it be, I'm just trying to think of the, the best way to do this, because we have everybody here, and if we refer it to the budget planning meetings of which, pro such, of which there could be several meetings, and then if there's questions, like, for myself, I'm comfortable just making a recommendation that this amount be implemented in the budget, and that we don't debate whether or not to include this in the budget, again, at another set of meetings, because that, this committee of the whole was specifically designed to deliberate over the service agreements. And with the budget deliberations, you know, we just have quorum at the first meeting, we could end up falling into the new year to conclude this, which means all the groups are then waiting to see the outcome of those meetings, right? Whereas, you know, it's been the same amount. I mean, if there was a significant leap in, in the amounts requested from any group, then I could see, okay, maybe we need to hash this out. But given that everybody has met the terms over five years, has provided everything that they need to provide, I'm comfortable, just, sounds good, let's put in $28,000, put in a 2% effective 2018, and carry it on in the financial plan. But I'll, I know, like, Counselor Pearson, though, would like to debate it further, so I just want to get, I just want to know where, like, just have a bit of conversation on what councillors' expectations are. Like, this committee of the whole was specifically for this, so how many meetings do we need to hash this out? Whereas, can we just put it in the budget and roll along and focus on other things? Go ahead, Counselor Pearson.
Yeah, my point was, is that, because it is committee of the whole, and I just thought that the council has to give it the rubber stamp at the regular council meeting.
Yeah.
So I have no issue with it going straight to budget and putting it in as a line item, including the 2%. We just can't do that.
No. No, okay. So I just wanted to get clarity as to, onto that. Okay, so, so then Counselor Parkinson, please.
Through you, Your Worship. So it would not be considered a cost of living increase, it will be just a standard fee of 2%?
2%.
Correct?
Fine with 2%.
And not cost of living, though, right? Just a standard fee of 2% for each year?
Well, I think the, the advantage with 2% is that you know what it is year after year.
I'm okay with it, I'm just asking if that's what it is, and not cost of living.
Okay.
Because cost of living changes each year.
It does.
So either you're going to go with what the cost of living is, and that's what the rate would be each year, or it will just be a standard 2% increase each year.
Yeah. Mr., I'll ask Mr. Lenell, are you, do you have a prep? Does your, does the Community Association have a preference being cost of living as what it is provided by Stats Canada, or is 2%?
Whatever works, I'll pass. 2%, in my mind, is 2%. But, yeah.
That's good.
Okay. It's, I think it'll probably, at the end of five years, it'll probably roughly even out anyway. Counselor Loggins?
I'm just looking at the service agreement. It says that the SCA is responsible for any expenses in providing the services, and the language around that number six annual fee doesn't allow us to do, like, wage increases. So I think if we just do it as a 2%, then that's our way of giving the increase without being specific to the wages. So keeping the verbiage, cost of living, out of the equation is probably a better idea.
Okay. So we're seeing here that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the Suk Community Association agreement be reviewed for a period of five years, the amount of 20, I think it's 28...
It's 28.
28,000, plus a 2% annual increase be included in the 2018 financial plan. So is that, are you okay with that being your motion that you move?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Good. So any further discussion on the recommendation?
No.
Okay. May, just ask our corporate officer, is this going to regular council on Monday? Or where? I just want the groups to have a sense of what, so that they know for their planning purposes, when they have sort of, when they will receive a document signed that they can sign off of, and then they can note a plan accordingly.
So these recommendations can certainly go to council on Monday. We can include them in the agenda package. It will take us a little bit more time, probably, to get the agreements executed. I don't think that can be done by Monday, but as long as council is certain that this is the way they'd like to proceed with an actual renewal, we can start doing that.
Perfect. Well, there's four of us here, and I, and I hope to see you all on Monday. So that, that sounds good? We can have the, the recommendations from committee of the whole then ratified by council, and then the service agreements can be produced after that, and then they can just be rolled into the financial plan as, as they have been. Okay? Is that clear for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Lenell will be in touch accordingly, once, our staff will, once we have council signing off on it.
Right.
Okay? All right, I'll call the question then. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried unanimously. Thank you very much for your time and for all the service you provide to our community. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I just want to add, maybe in two weeks, we'll have kids on that field.
Okay? Please let us know. We'd like to be there to celebrate that achievement with you.
We're going to have an opening, but they'll probably play on it a little bit before they open.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Lenell. Okay. All right, thank you. So next up, I'd like to welcome the Suk Regional Historical Society. I see Mr. Beddoes and Mr. Boyko presenting. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
And if you could, please just turn on the microphone. Thank you, sir.
There we go. Anyways, I'm Al Beddoes, I'm the president of the Suk Regional Historical Society, and Lee, of course, is our executive director. I'm here today for, for two things. One is our grant application, which you have, we have submitted, and you have that hopefully in front of you with all the details of it. And the second one is the final report to the District of Suk of our Visitor Information Center, and that's why I'm here tonight, and a rundown of the request, the demographics of the people that were visiting our visitor center, and the questions they asked. This last year, we had 16,332 requests, and, which was an increase of 5% over last year, which we kind of attribute to the smoke in the interior, where a lot of people were coming to the island, and it's also spun off to our little gift shop. Everything is being submitted, and just basically, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to elaborate on them.
Thank you, Mr. Beddoes. We also like to thank you for hosting the night market. I'm wondering if you're seeing increases in attendance there a year? I think it's been three years now of the market.
Actually, this last year has been, again, a, a better year, and it's also impacted on our gift shop. People, what I like about it personally is that our local residents are coming down, and they're bringing their guests from out of town, and they're showcasing our museum, which we're very proud of, and it's sort of been very good. A lot of work for Lee, but not so much for me, I'm okay with it.
I suppose you are. Counselor Pearson?
Yes, thank you both for the, the presentation, and I'm sorry about my, missing the last meeting, and there was a conflict with my rehearsal for a certain...
Yeah, ours too. We all had a lead to deal with that, right?
So, no, I want to, I want to let council know that I've been on the committee now, and seeing really cool, good work by that committee. I know Counselor Parkinson sat ahead of me. You guys represent Suk while the Suk Regional Historical Society, very good organization, very, very refreshing to sit at your very formalized meetings that you, that you have.
I think that's a compliment, thank you.
No, it's very, it's, it's a pleasure to work with you, seeing great work being done, and, and the, the accounting and the presentations by Mr. Boyko at those meetings, first, first class. So very much...
I'm very pleased to have Lee there to, to do all the hard work of putting these reports out, and very impressed myself.
So I'll make a motion to move this, recommend the proposed budget for the Suk Regional Historical Society to regular council, same as last one. Are you, how much were you asking for increase? Sorry.
I have those.
Yeah, we better ask that question.
I was ready for you. We're asking 23,000, 23,000, no, actually, 7 million, no, 23,650 for this year, and we did a two-year, and 26, 123. And that's that 2% that you heard in the previous presentation, so that, that's worked in there as well.
Counselor Parkinson? Yep.
Through you, Your Worship. I guess this would be to our finance officer. So the amount you were getting previously was 20,400? Is that correct? That's what it shows up at the front?
I don't have that figure there, so...
I think so. Yeah.
It's on page 48 of 105.
Through you, Your Worship. It's actually, the budget for 2017 was 21,000 to 25, which was a lift from the previous...
Okay, because in, in the contract right here, it says 20,400. So that, it's something else?
Through you, Your Worship, it has increased. The, the society had asked previously for an increase of...
Okay, and so what is it? I'm sorry?
Yeah, through you, Your Worship, again, it's 21,000 to 25 for 2017.
Okay. So 21 to 25, and then you asked for...
We're going at 23,650.
And so you've asked for an additional 2,000 for next year and the year after?
2%?
Plus, yeah, no. Okay.
2,000?
Can we just have one person speaking at a time?
So we get 21,225. You've asked for additional $2,000 for next year and the following year, plus a 2% increase, right? Okay.
And then...
And the $2,000 is to cover the cost of increase for the minimum wage. Is that how I read it, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so after the two years, you figure you'll be on line, on par with everything, and then it will go back down to what the fee is. So in the contract, then, it will have to be the same for the first two years, and then the next two years will be a different number. Is that correct?
Yeah. So we're looking... So we're looking, okay, I had it now, okay, it's still a five-year agreement, right? And then the first two years are that and then in year three, it goes down?
Well, they don't have the 2,000 there anymore.
The, the first, we're asking for a $2,000 bump to allow us to deal with the rise in the minimum wage because that impacts our paid employees all up and down the line.
Okay.
By that time, we figure in two years, the minimum wage will be set probably at $15 an hour and that $2,000 bump for the two years would be enough to cover that raise. And then we don't need it, you know, once they're, then it's the cost of, not cost of living, but it's the, whatever you call it, the 2% after that.
Okay, I see. So then it'll stay at the 26,123 plus the 2% and accumulate for the other years?
Yes, very much so, yes.
Got it. Councillor Parkinson?
So would it be better just to increase it to 23,000 always with the 2%?
No, let's just, go ahead.
Well, because...
We're not asking for it to be dropped down again after two years. Okay, we're asking...
But he says 21,225.
It's, right now, 21,225.
Correct.
We're asking, now, first of all, it was unclear how many years you were asking for contract. Nope, there was nothing in the letter that we got about X number of years or whatever, right? So just to be clear on that. So we're asking in this first year of the contract, 23,650 and then we're asking 26,123 in the second year of the contract. And we hadn't, other than saying that we'd be, at that point, we figured we'd be stable and we'd be, you know, looking at cost of living or 2% increases at, at, from that level forward. Okay? But certainly happy to come to council again and ask without having a five-year agreement.
Okay, I think it's, well, we would sort of leave it to you. Like if you wanted to do a two-year agreement, I think council would be agreeable to that. If there's a preference for five, council would be agreeable to that.
Yeah, we weren't sure, so it was prepared on a two-year, because that's sort of how far we want to go. If you said five years, well, we could have done that, I guess, but...
Okay. Councillor Pearson?
Well, I was at the meeting where, where Mr. Boyko talked about the financial increases in the minimum wage. So my understanding was tonight's, they were going to come to us and ask for the increase to cover that, then the increase to cover that, and then that would be 2% on top of their existing current contract. They need 2,000 in, built in, then 2,000 more, plus 2%, then 2% after that. And I think they're, I think they know that at the end of that, if they had to come back after three years, I'm prepared to make a motion to give them a five-year agreement so that they can build their financial plan. But it would, it may be subject to change in year three if that 2,000 wasn't enough, I think. If that, if I can remember correctly how you said that.
Yeah, we anticipate it will, but yes, by all means. I mean, who, who knows what the future brings. I mean, two years down the road, we, we don't know what we're dealing with.
So through the, did I, did I explain that the way that you said it at that meeting?
I think so.
Yep, I think, I think I'm clear on what it is. And then I think there's always an opportunity if, if things shift, that you come to council mid-contract and say, look, you know, we used to receive this funding and then that changed or this changed. I mean, I think that's, that's always an option to anybody, you know? So yes. Councillor Parkinson, are you good?
Yeah, so...
Microphone?
Through your worship, so that means just for the next two years, it will be the additional $2,000 and then every year after that, there is no increase? So then the amount would stay at the 26,123 plus the 2% each year after that?
Yes. So it, it sort of bumps up the first two and then it stays at that level with 2% added for the remaining three years?
Correct.
Yeah. Councillor Loggins, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay. So this would be then a motion that the Committee of the Whole recommend to council that the SUC Historical Society Agreement be renewed for a period of five years, the amount of 23,650 for 2018, 26,123 for 2019, plus a 2% annual increase thereafter be included in the 2018 financial plan. Councillor Pearson, microphone.
So through the chair to Mr. Boyko, did you include 2% in there? Just so you're, so you're not short, so you're good, okay?
Yes, that's perfect, yeah.
Okay, would you like to move that motion, Councillor Pearson?
Let's move that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? See none? All those in favor, opposed, motions carried. And same as the last group, once council ratifies this, we'll be in touch for the service agreements to be signed. And I realize that I have forgotten to invite any members of the public up to speak to this, so is there... I'm seeing some agreements there, so looks like we're good. Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, so next up, we have the SUC Region Tourism Association Community Service Agreement, please. And welcome, Mr. Chamberland. And Mr. Boyko, welcome back.
Thank you, worship and council. First, I'd like to start by thanking you for the previous five years of support. I think we've done a lot as a volunteer group and we're going to show you some examples of things that we've been working on the last few years. Sarah, if you could play the video. This is our, this is a video of this last year's project with the Tours of Victoria. It cost us $3,000 to be a part of that $80,000 program?
90.
90, so. So what we're doing here is we are marketing the Circle Route. In the last couple of years, we've been really focusing on the Circle Route. At the end of the day, it really gets a lot of the businesses between SUC and Port Renfrew and it also creates a good experience. Cowchun, as you can see, Sydney, where the ferry is and airport is, and also Victoria, so. that was reported by Tours of Victoria, so, as of today. So I think it's doing a pretty good job promoting our Circle Route in our area. Last year, or sorry, so 2017 was with Tours of Victoria, 2016, we worked with Sydney as our partner. We did, we, oh, if you want us to put on the website that we, so we created a webpage, vicircleroute.com and it pretty much provides a link to our SUC tourism website and then also Sydney's. I mean, the big thing, a lot of people said, you know, maybe doesn't, didn't make a lot of sense for the Circle Route, but the way DBC changed their funding, so like in the first three years, we were just getting matching funds and we were having a large, you know, a large budget and we could kind of do with what we wanted. But then the last two years, we've had to partner. So that was the only option we had two years ago. But I think we did a good job. We got a, a lot of play in the States and like Washington, Portland on the radio, TV networks, ads on the Black Ball ferries. Am I missing this? No. But yeah, so I'm kind of nailing the points. But anyways, yeah, I think it's, it's a great website. It shows up good on Google and yeah. So any questions on that stuff?
Councillor Parkinson?
Through your worship, so I went to your AGM when you presented this and I thought it was very impressive and you had a great turnout for the people that were there. The conversation was very great and to see that you were partnering with Sydney and with Victoria and Cowchun, I thought that was great. And the Circle Route really does bring in a lot of people to SUC and the area. Being a marriage commissioner and being at the hotel lot, you hear about people who are on the Circle Route and going through and that they've seen it on the, the sites and things. So I think that is great. I also understand that at the meeting, you had the guest speaker from Victoria talking about having the cruise ships come in and things like that. So there are a lot of things that are going on with tourism and I think it's a great benefit to SUC to still be part of it all. So, yeah, good on you guys. I think it was a great job.
Paul Nursey from Tours of Victoria was hoping to be here this evening, but he's unfortunately ill. He sort of stated at the press recently, he wants the Circle Route to be as iconic as the trip to Hannah. It's sort of that sort of concept type of thing eventually down the line. They really want to see the development of, they realize they can't just have all their tourists that, in front of the Empress. They've got to see a broader area, so.
And, and the other part that was great about that too was with the, when this program was put into place, that Victoria was the one that offered up the majority of the money and they put 30,000 into it and that each of the smaller towns put in 3,000. So it was a really good bang for our buck, for sure.
Thank you, Councillor Parkinson. Councillor Pearson?
Well, I want to, I want to thank you both. I want to thank Ryan particularly for the, the newer energy that you're putting into, into this. I've seen a level of enthusiasm. I'm hearing about it in the community. I'm hearing about the Circle Route. I'm hearing that promotion. So, so thank you very much for the work that you're doing. I see you're partnering with Mr. Boyko, couldn't, can't go wrong there. So, no, it's, it's, it's really good. So I'll make the motion that we support the funding for the next five-year plan.
I wasn't, I wasn't even done yet. I was just, I was just talking about, I was just talking about...
Well, it's cool, you're right.
I know. No, that's good. If you want to keep going, that's awesome.
May I also, with the 2% as well, increase for, for SURA as well?
Yep.
I would like to see all groups get the same, you know, the fourth letter here.
Yep, and I'll just...
This is, this is so easy.
Yep. Can we, and I'm totally fine with that. I, I would like to just hear the end, what's remaining in your presentation.
I'd like to keep talking a little bit. You know, there has been a change. I've, I've been the president for two years now and I think we, you know, what we wanted to do is definitely find our essential items that SURA provides and make that clear to the city. And I mean, like one of the best things I think that we're also doing with the 23,000 you have been giving us is the flat map production. And an example would be yesterday, I went out to Stoke Pizza out in Shirley and I ordered a couple of pizzas and I sat down in front of the owners and they were busy working. I introduced myself as the president of SURA and they're like, oh, you're the maps guy. We, and I'm like, yeah, I guess I am. And they're like, we really want to get on that flat map. And I was like, for a new business to come out and re, you know, understand what we're doing and want to be excited to be a part of that and, you know, be a member. So I think that's like the big thing in the last year or two is trying to get more businesses in our town. Like everyone in our town benefits from tourism. So I think we're trying to build our membership and get more money that way as well. And that's been one of my goals as president. So, anything you want to add?
No.
And then also like we're, you know, we're still in the visitor guide distribution program. We sponsor that. Our website, we, like the first three years of this contract, we put a lot of money into that website and I think it's just smart that we keep that thing going because we just put so much time and effort into that. And then also for, you know, new businesses coming in, we need to really start creating a database so people can use images, videos, you know, things that we're paying for. And we didn't do a good job of that in the first three years and I think that's something that I really want to help new businesses coming into the town, you know, be able to go to SURA, hey, I need a picture of the Pauls in this resolution. Well, hey, here you go. We just did a campaign with Tours of Victoria. I can just email Tours of Victoria on behalf of them and provide stuff like that. So, you know, what I'd like to see is if you guys come out to our AGM and we need to have bigger discussions in our, in our town, I think, about tourism and how we can all help each other. And yeah, so there you go.
No, thank you very much, gentlemen. Just a couple of things. As you know, we have a, a new brewery opening very soon and over, just over the border in Otter Point, there's also Bad Dog Brewery opening at some point soon as well. I was at a wedding there in the summer. So that kind of has three, like we have...
Is that SUC?
It's, it's in Otter Point, but it's just, it's just up on...
We had a SUC meeting.
Yep, so that gives us SUC Brewing Company, SUC Oceanside Brewery and Bad Dog and then there's Sheringham in Tugwell, right? There's five and that sort of makes for a really interesting excursion for people and then to stay at the, at the prestige in the evening. So as they go about the Circle Route, then it, it isn't the case of spending, like there's a lot to do along the route. So I think that's great.
Can I just, can I just add on that?
Sure.
Just while you're on that subject. They actually did, like SOB, Tugwell, Sheringham and one other place, they actually did their own, they got together, did their own little cards and I founded a SOB. And like I'd like to be able to, you know, give, be, like give the okay to that group that got together and pay for their, their marketing. Like, you know, like I mean, at the end of the day, they could do a grant to the, the board and I can approve like, hey, we can help you out with the cost of that, right?
Yeah.
I think it makes sense. And the other thing on that is actually someone mentioned the bus. I think in the next five to 10 years, I think that would be the most amazing thing going forward and a goal for SUC to have eventually is a tourism bus during the summer months, during the peak months. That could be doing these tours safely and, you know, not promoting drinking and driving, so on and so forth. And then potentially that bus could be used in the community and for kids for sports activities in our, during the school months. I think that should be like a really big goal for SUC moving forward is to try and have a community bus that's half tourism and half for the kids as we move forward, so.
Well, we look forward to your proposal on that, once you have the idea together. That would be great.
Ask for another 40 grand.
Yeah. And just the last piece, I spoke with the film production crew from elsewhere that was here in town for six weeks and asked them like, how did you find our community? I know that the Greater Victoria Film Commission does a lot of work and there is a site called Creative BC and so I guess that's what the film scouts used and they typed in cabin on Oceanside, Ocean Cliff, and then that's how they found SUC. And then they started to look at, okay, well, what else can we do there? Because obviously it's to their benefit to have as much as they need for the production located and having the hotel here is what made it happen. Without the hotel, they never would have been able to land this here. So that might be something, just when you have time, is to see what other pieces, when you talk about the imaging and sharing those images, maybe there's other things that could be uploaded, if you haven't done that already. But that may be in it because it's in the, it's in the off-season. It brought a lot of exposure here and I think the crew itself just found this to be an exceptional location for the work that they were doing and I thought that was pretty cool.
Just on, on that point, certainly you've done some work with Creative BC and the Film Commission in the past and I'd certainly hope that we can do more of that in the future, for sure.
Excellent. Okay, so we do have the recommendation, the Committee of the Whole recommend to council that the SUC Community Association, SUC Community, it should be SUC Region Tourism Association.
Yep.
Agreement be renewed for a period of five years, the amount of 23,000 plus 2% annual increases to be included in the 2018 financial plan. Moved by councillor Parkinson? Yes?
Sure.
Okay. Anything more to speak on that? Okay. All right, good. All those in favor, opposed, motion is carried. Like the other groups, we'll be in touch once council ratifies that decision. You're always welcome to attend the council meeting on Tuesday, on Monday, anyway.
Thank you very much.
There's just an off, totally off-agenda comment that I am actually going to allow. That's only because I see Mr. Beddoes in front of me. We just wanted to know the date of the Santa Claus parade?
26.
Thank you.
The 26th of November?
The day after the one in Victoria.
No, December.
November.
November.
Right, we are in November, got it.
November 26.
There's actually a poll just while we're on that. There is a sale pass going on on December 2nd.
December 2nd.
And he uses a car reserve brand, it's like a foreign niche material for a, a TAC sort. He does this every...
He does this every year.
Eli.
Eli.
Yep.
He does this every year, and we're up and down in participants and people even knowing about it, so. It would be September seventh.
Okay, so November twenty-sixth, what, what time do we need to muster?
Parade is at five.
Five PM.
We have a quarter to. And you know we have the Nathan Bennett coming up.
Yep.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Ooh, okay.
Mr. Beto, it said Edward Mill Community School was the motto. I, I know it said that.
Same place as last year, Sissino School before him.
Sissino School? That's even further!
I was trying to shorten it from Edward Mill.
It's COVID here.
Ooh, that's a long parade.
Okay. Off-topic, but November twenty-sixth, four forty-five, Suuk Elementary School is the mustering. Parade starts sharply at five. Find your Santa hats. We will be there.
Leadership team is looking after festivities in town after the parade. Bouncy castle, they have hot chocolate, hot dogs, baked goods, just by donation, we will charge for.
Okay.
They're working after that.
That'll be in the Evergreen Centre.
That's correct.
Same as last year. We will be there. We'll find our hats. Thank you, Mr. Beto. Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay, so last but not least, I'd like to welcome the Suuk Region Community Health Network Community Service Agreement.
Thank you. Yeah, can we cut it really, really short? Thank you, Mayor Tate and Council. We're, I'm Mary Dan, I'm the Chair of the Suuk Region Communities Health Network, and this is Agnes.
And I'm working as a Volunteer Centre Coordinator.
And we've also got some of our board here. So, Loretta Deitcher, Christine Bossi is the Coordinator of the Suuk Region Communities Health Network, Searchen, and Rick Robinson. So, thank you. We do have a little bit of a presentation that's based on the, what we sent in. The Suuk Region's Community Health Network, I just got to make sure this is on, press aside? Or not? I think so, too. Okay. So, currently, we actually have a really active board. We have 10 board members, and we have two part-time staff, and we offer a few programs. So, we run the Suuk Region Volunteer Centre. We maintain the Suuk Region Resources website. We run the Suuk Region Community Health Network Steering Committee, and we facilitate the age-friendly committee. And the age-friendly committee has about 12 really active members right now. It's a very vibrant committee right now. We also facilitate the Domestic Violence and Abuse Working Group, and we sit on a lot of other committees. So, we have three members on the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group, a member on the Executive Steering Committee for the Suuk Regional Care Centre. We sit on the Child and Youth Mental Health and Substance Abuse Working Group, the South Island Division of Family Practice Partners for Better Health Committee, and the Vancouver Island Communities Health Network. Most of the activities that we do are done by volunteers, so there's very low cost in them. But the program that does need some financial financing is the Suuk Volunteer Centre. So, we're going to focus a little bit more on that, and by funding the Volunteer Centre, it allows us to carry on the other activities that we do. So, we just have statistics for since January 2017, so it's about a 10-month period. Also noting that in that time, we were without a coordinator for three months, so these numbers would be higher if that was being filled for the full-time. So, we had, our volunteers for the Suuk Volunteer Centre donated more than 500 hours. They had 94 telephone inquiries, 52 drop-ins, 25 interviews and direct referrals, and over 80 volunteer positions posted online. We also just put stuff on Facebook for a lot of other organizations, so when the music festivals and stuff need somebody, we post it. We have no way of actually capturing those numbers to know whether people fill those positions based on what we saw or not, so the numbers could actually be higher. We promoted 518 local events this year, and we have 538 community members that receive the newsletter. So, it's a very active program. The successes, the Volunteer Centre maintains contact with 145 nonprofit organizations within the Suuk region, and we are constantly getting requests from them to either advertise their programs or find volunteers that will, that they need to run their services. The centre, as well as doing that, is really well-recognized for knowing what are the businesses and what are the needs in Suuk. So, they also get people coming in just asking, "Where can we go for help?", as well as people looking for volunteers. They also get phone calls from local businesses, from employment counselors, from social workers that are looking for volunteer opportunities for their clients, sometimes to help fulfill needs that are being placed on them. They're linking with the Edward Mill Community School to look at providing opportunities for students to find volunteer placement. We know that that's a requirement of graduation, but it's also, you know, the youth are looking for ways to engage in the community as well. And we support events through the region, such as Suuk Rotary Auction, Canada Day, Fall Fair, that sort of stuff. We, last year, for the last, I think, two years, we partnered with the CRA to offer a community income tax clinic, and so that was, we had a person, a volunteer, do income taxes for people on low income. Last year, we did 215 returns, and we are currently looking for somebody to be able to run that program again this year. So, that was a really good program. We're, we're partnering with the Suuk, I always get this wrong, the Suuk Seniors Drop-In Centre. And now that they are, as you guys are well aware, without a building, one of the ways that we're helping maintain activity within that centre is through the Lifelong Learning and the Seniors Cafe, and we're doing that in partnership with them. We did receive, they received a grant for that, and we're currently looking on how can that be sustained without, when that grant money runs out. We also partner with Big Brother, Big Sister, Victoria Literacy Coalition, the Edward Mill Community School, Seapark, a lot of other organizations. We do the brochure of where to find help in Suuk, so trying to keep that up to date and get that distributed out, and just, you know, maintaining the website and the Facebook page. We, we also, about a year and a half ago, helped to facilitate the health forum that was done by the District of Suuk, and we're still part of looking at how that will work out and, and kind of what role we might have in that. We also did surveys with seniors to look at what, what are their needs in order to be able to age well in their homes, and we're hoping to use that information in grants that we're putting out to try and get services like the Better at Homes program or other services for seniors within Suuk. So, in our future, I'm talking really fast, we hope to continue what we're already offering and expand those services. We have had a substantial increase in our volunteers through the Lifelong Learning Project, and some of those volunteers were helping organize it. Some of them were offering their expertise in, in running workshops for seniors. We have been asked through the Eldercare and BC Healthy Communities to be a pilot for the Suuk Seniors Information Hub, and that's a program that they're looking at doing some pilot cities right now, and hopefully, if it's successful, it will go through BC and then national across Canada. And we are looking at attaining funds for the coordination of Better at Homes program. We were also asked by BC Healthy Communities to pilot their Facilitator's Guide for Seniors, so we're just kind of organizing what that's going to look like right now. That actually has to be completed by the end of December, I think, so that's going to be a very quick rollout. And just to say that, you know, by, by putting this money into the Suuk Volunteer Centre, it really does help us do all the other work that we're able to do. So, you will notice in our budget, we did ask for an increase. For the last three years, we received 17,005. We asked if that could go up to 22,500, and the reason for that is, we're really looking at being able to secure a house, a home for us, not a house, but a place to be. Right now, we only have office space for two half-days a week, and those are the hours that the Volunteer Centre runs. We are at risk of losing that space, because obviously, they want that space to be filled up full-time. So, we did approach, and interestingly enough, the cost to rent that space, and it's in the Suuk Youth and Child Family Centre, is the same to have it full-time as it was if we had it half-time. So, it's about 7,000, just over $7,000 for the year, and that would allow us to expand the hours of the Volunteer Centre, but it would also give us a place to do the other activities of the Suuk Region Community Health Network out of there. We're also looking at being able to increase the hours for the coordinator, if we're increasing the hours that it's open. Right now, our coordinator works eight hours a week, and we'd like to increase that to 12 hours a week, so that we can look for more grants, look for more, more partnerships, be able to develop more liaisons within the community for the Volunteer Centre.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Parkinson, please.
Through your worship.
Oh, they said it's a goal. He said, "Don't forget the cost of living increase after next year."
That's funny.
Two percent.
Through your worship. When you were talking about the Seniors Cafe, can you tell me what that actually is, what you're doing with them?
Yeah, so what they were doing is having two sites in the community where seniors could get together and talk, and, and kind of looking at it was developed to kind of see where could it go. So, once the, the senior centre left the community centre, how could we do, what could we do to place it? So, it started at Vienna Bakery and Mum's Cafe. People could, they could just get together and talk, they could look at having educational sessions, kind of looking at whatever it was that they were, they were wanting. Interestingly enough, very different groups went to each of those places, so they, they have their affiliations with the restaurants in Suuk where they go. So, I believe there's only one of those still running?
Yes.
And that's at the Vienna Bakery?
Yeah. And so, volunteers go there once a week and sit with seniors, listen to what they have to say, come up with ideas. And then from that, we also developed the Lifelong Learning Sessions, so those are educational sessions that are being run in the community.
And you were also set, thank you for that, and you were also looking for a place to go to? Have you any idea where, where that's going to be?
Well, we're hoping to secure the space we're in already. So, right now, we have it for two half-days a week, and we, we, that's in the Suuk Child and Youth Family Centre. And so, we'd like to secure that space for full-time. And that, because right now, we're at risk, we're, we're on a month-to-month rental right now, because they really want somebody in there more time. We'd be given a 30-day notice if they found somebody else to take that place.
Okay. So, do, will you be doing a lease with them, then?
We would do a yearly lease, yes.
Okay.
If we were able to have it full-time, yeah.
And I, and I just wanted to say, you did 518 volunteers for 518 events this year? Like, that's really impressive.
Thank you.
Counselor Loggins, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I just want to say, thank you so much for all that you do to everyone who's part of your group, because this service agreement is so amazing to me. I think that this is truly work that would not get done without your hard work and dedication, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Pearson?
Yeah, I'd like to echo, I'd like to echo all of their statements as well. Thank you for everything that you do. Just a couple of little things for me, is that it's kind of dawned on me tonight, when I hear about the Circle Route, and I hear that, you know, like, the links to the other service agreements could be part of those websites, like, like what Mr. Chamberlain was talking about earlier. So, the, the people traveling through might want, be interested in coming to, you know, Suuk Volunteer Organization. And, and I like, I like to see that maybe our links, that there's links throughout those websites. That's, that's cool. The one thing that, you know, one of our advantages is that we sit here and we listen to everybody. Your group, what's going on out there is the Suuk Harborsite Cohousing, which is putting on their second project. It seems that there's some natural synergies there, that communication should be between that cohousing, because aging at home, age-friendly, all of those things, the cohousing, you know, it, it, it actually is an epitome of that, of that. So, just a couple of comments, so I'll be supporting the motion when Brenda makes it.
So, I think.
We actually have two members for the current cohousing unit. One is on our board, and they are involved in the Lifelong Learning Sessions, so, yeah, it's a, it's a great project.
So, I think that it should be the Suuk Region Community Health Network.
Communities.
Communities, Suuk Region Communities.
Yeah.
Health Network.
Health Network.
Health Network, instead of Initiative, right?
Okay. Be renewed for a period of five years, the amount of 22,500 plus 2% annual increase be included in the 2018 financial plan, and that's what Counselor Parkinson is moving. And I would just like to speak to it. I completely support it, and glad that you've asked for the increase, and I'm very grateful for the work that you're doing. All the work that the Primary Health Working Services Group has done would not have been possible if it had not been for your membership to be at the table and taking pieces away and returning back and reporting back. It's, everything is sort of woven together, but the expertise that everyone is bringing is, is so valuable. I don't know that I would have moved it to the point of where it is today, had it not been for the work and the assistance that's been provided, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And, yeah, it's excellent. So, and I see that there was a piece in your first slide that came out of the Health Summit. The document's almost done. Finally, so we'll get it out there, and that'll be great. It's just, there's been other priorities happening, but we, we're getting there, and I, it's just other pieces have taken on, and I know there's other groups that are moving with the various pieces, but that's great. And I was at the music festival and did speak with some folks that were volunteering, because there's a lot of people in Suuk that cannot commit to something that's ongoing, but would like to do something on a one-off basis, so they'll see that and be like, "Okay, well, I can do this, I can do an event for part of the day or half a day, just can't make that ongoing commitment." And that's where I think the volunteer, it's, it's just so essential, because then it provides for that opportunity for those one-offs things here and there. So, that's great. So, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Is there any public input on anything? For tonight's items? No, I think that is. I will call for a motion to adjourn, please. It's moved by Counselor Loggins. All those in favor? Opposed?